Just a few seconds, we should be live. You're good to go.
Thank you. I call to order the January 21st, 2021 Board of Commissioners' regular session. Madam Clerk, will you please take the roll?
Commissioner Steve Frisbee.
Present.
Commissioner Derek King.
Present.
Commissioner Tommy Miller.
Present.
Commissioner Gary Tompkins.
Present.
Commissioner Kathy Sue Betty.
Here.
Commissioner Rachel Hatcher.
Present.
Commissioner Jake Smith. You.
You did Jake. Sorry about that. Present. Thank you.
We have one.
Thank you. We'll have a moment of silence and I request that you keep the family of Phil Savage. Passed away earlier this last week. Phil served many terms on the County Veterans Committee. And he helped push the Veterans Village into fruition back in 2012, I believe it was. He's a retired police officer with Penfield Township and served admirably in many different roles. Thank you. Commissioner Miller, allegiance in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation.
One nation.
Under God, freedom, and liberty. Justice. And justice for all.
Thank you, Tommy.
Can I have a motion to approve the January 21st, 2021 Board of Commissioners' regular session as presented?
So moved, Hatcher.
Still moved.
Hatcher and Miller. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Frisbee.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Betty.
Leave your muted Kathy Sue. It looks like we lost her.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
No, no, I want to wait.
Oh wait, she's back now.
Oh yes, okay, there we go. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners' January 7th, 2021 organizational session as presented? So moved.
So moved, Hatcher.
Tompkins and Hatcher. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner King.
Yes.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Betty.
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee.
Yes. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is citizens' time. During citizens' time, the board chair shall recognize any person wishing to address the board. A person recognized by the chair shall call in and state his or her name and community of residence. A person may address the board only once on the same matter during each period set aside for citizens' time on the agenda and only on matters that are relevant to county government. The chair shall control the length of time each person shall be allowed to speak, but shall not exceed three minutes and shall not allow negative personal comments. Please mute your TV or computer when calling in as the background sound will generate feedback. Please note there's an approximately 30 second delay between the live meeting and the YouTube feed. Is there anyone who would like to address their commissioners? Dane, is there anyone in the queue?
There is no one so far.
Okay. So we'll go for a minute. Is there anyone who would like to address their commissioners? Still nobody, Dane?
Nope, still nobody in the queue yet.
All right. Anyone who would like to address their commissioners? Seeing none, we'll move on. Elected and appointed county officials' comments. Anyone who would like to speak to them?
I'd like to just mention that the county treasurers in the state of Michigan have been meeting as regularly about once a week. The new legislation was passed on December 22nd. It's the bills 255 and 256 that altered the Property Tax Act. We're going to have a boot camp actually coming up this next week that Idolcheck, one of the companies that handles all of our noticing and our auction, is going to go over with some attorneys on the call and around the Zoom meeting to kind of give us some insight as to how this may play out as far as the surplus funds that Raffielli versus Oakland County Supreme Court ruling that a lot of the counties, as Jim Dyer is well aware, because we're getting FOIA count, our FOIAs at least a couple of three a week if I'm not mistaken. But we're going to have to make some new decisions. They're tying our hands in the statute as to how funds can be dispersed out of certain accounts as far as our fees and some of the money that we collect on forfeiture and foreclosure money. So it's going to be a kind of interesting, we're going to have to be creative, think outside the box and figure out how we're going to continue to fund the county and make sure that we still have a lot enough money to fund the operations of the Treasurers' Office. Land Bank probably is going to get impacted by this. Lenawee, or I think it was Lenawee County, am I correct, Melinda? Has already closed their land bank based on the, what was it, Lenawee?
LaPierre.
Oh, LaPierre. Okay, I knew it began with an L. Already has closed their land bank. Kalamazoo has decided not to fund their land bank with their appropriation from the County General Fund. So we don't know what the impact is going to be down the road. It's going to be an interesting couple of years. I guess I'm just glad that I was elected and having luckily enough worked on the legislation for the last year and a half. And I think we've got a pretty good change to legislation, but there's a couple loopholes I have a feeling in there that could allow some people to purchase properties and not, you know, possibly not pay their taxes, but I think things will probably work out. But I'm just wanted to let you know that it's going to be an interesting couple of years coming up.
Thank you.
Yeah, and also we had our show cause hearing and we had four people show up. And we were able to handle that as far as keeping distance and wearing masks and a couple of times we met people right outside the door. So that all worked out good. Just glad about that.
Thank you. I know you've put a lot of efforts along with Jim Dyer into that act, so we appreciate all of, all the help. Anybody else?
Vice Chair, I'm sorry, not Vice Chair, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Sir Chair. I was just trying to wait to see. I'd actually, I wanted to ask a question with Brian actually too in reference to the land bank. I was recently, well, Brian, I was recently involved in a meeting with, I think, the city of Battle Creek and DDA and, and I wanted to say I appreciate the assistance that I received from your staff members, Krista, through the land bank, but there was a development that was in the process that was being worked out for a homeless development in Battle Creek. And for one reason or another, I knew that the land bank, we were selling some of the property to this particular development company, but it didn't pass at the city level. And so my question, Brian, is actually, I was just, because I asked Krista. I'm trying to make sure, because that was in my district and I was not aware of my constituents and their actual opinions and feelings on this particular development and project. So I asked Krista to keep me involved and keep me so that I would be able to know about that. I'm sure she talked about the, I'm just trying to make sure that I stay on top of that. How do I do that with the land bank and, you know, making sure that, you know, what needs to be passed or certain?
Just, just a little insight.
Thank you.
A little insight in it. It was a land bank property. And the developer met all of the criteria to purchase that property from the land bank. And we had no option but to offer it. And that's why we kind of threw it to the city and of course, New Level Sports got involved because it was in very close to the New Level Sports area. And Pastor McCoy and our department and the land bank had conversations. He wasn't angry with us. He was angry with the development being able to come in there. But they're, anybody else, they have the rights, they met all the criteria. We can't cherry pick. We can't say you can, you can't. That's not our job. We have to follow what the laws are and the law says that if you meet the criteria to purchase the property and we, we have to offer it.
Sure.
Well, it'd be like you wanted to go buy something. I said, well, no, I don't like you. I don't want to let you do it.
Exactly.
We threw it to the city that we figured we got it out of our hands.
And the city, I guess, did not come back and communicate it properly is what I'm understanding. So what I wanted to make sure as a commissioner and that particular development being in my district, I wanted to make sure that I was, as I explained to Krista, available to her. I felt bad because I felt maybe I had dropped the ball or maybe I was not involved and available for her.
No, that happened within the day of the meeting with the city.
Okay, okay.
I mean, I found out about it just, just prior to the city commission meeting.
Okay.
That an issue came up. We didn't even realize it was going to be an issue.
Okay.
Before I got hold of us.
Perfect.
We thought it was just, you know, it's affordable housing and everybody's looking for affordable housing. So it was not on anybody's radar. It just all of a sudden popped up when Pastor McCoy got ahold of us and said, he didn't like it. We go, whoa, we had to take a real quick step back. So that's why nobody was, it's like any purchase of property. We sell property all year long.
And I'm saying, okay, or I'm saying great, only to say to you, Brian, that I'm saying, okay, not because that's great, but I'm saying that whenever I, I need to be available to you guys or whenever you need to communicate, please let the staff know that they're more than welcome to reach out to me so that the county doesn't end up in one of those, you know, predicaments where we don't know that the community does not want this. And, you know, we're both kind of sitting there like, I didn't know that. I didn't know that. So I told Krista to please just feel free at, at any time to let me know, okay? Or ask me a question or keep me involved because I was kind of blindsided. Yeah.
No, I, we were blindsided just as much as everybody else. You know, it came out of nowhere.
Yeah, it did.
All right. Are there any other county officials that would like to speak tonight? All right. There are no special order of business. We have a consent agenda with four items. Is there any, can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
To move Smith.
Smith?
Support.
Smith and Miller, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller.
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Betty.
You're muted Kathy Sue. Commissioner Betty, you're muted. Give us a thumbs up or a thumbs down. There you go.
Sorry, you guys. Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee.
Yes.
Commissioner King.
Yes, please.
That's seven yes.
Motion carries. Any special committee workshop or board reports?
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. First and foremost, I have three this evening. First and foremost, the Senior Village Committee met on January 8th. We heard a presentation from Laura Ferrara, the CEO of Senior Care Partners Pace, and Dr. Daniel Browner, Chair of Geriatrics at the WMU, WMU Stryker School of Medicine on the effects of social isolation and the impact that grand pads are having on seniors and actually the very positive impact that they're having on seniors with technology. We also approved many grants for the city of Marshall relative to the Albion Marshall Connector in the amount of $3,500 as well as Neighborhoods Inc. in the amount of $5,000. The Homer Lake Board met on January 12th. Approved was the slate of officers as I will continue to, to serve as Chair, Secretary and Administrator of the Board as while Dave Heschel sort will serve as the Treasurer. By me serving as the Administrator, it's, the Board's been able to save about $4,000 from expenditure. So that's always a good thing. We also approved the 2021 fiscal year budget. We'll be paying the last payment on our loan in the amount of $2,000, which will render our board debt free. And we as a board have paid off the loan nine years ahead of schedule, so more money could be used on the lake. So great job by the, the board really look at being financially conscious of that and making sure that we are debt free. And also we discussed some future items focusing on continuing to widen our channel and certainly keeping lily pads removed from the walkout landing and future product projects. And then finally, the Southwest Michigan Behavioral Health Substance Use Policy Oversight Board met on January 18th. We reviewed, we reviewed admission data for 2020. Calhoun County saw increases in both alcohol and methamphetamine admissions. Alcohol probably not so much of a concern as much as, as we also know, we've been working really hard on opioids and we seen reduction there, but what we're seeing is that methamphetamine, obviously because of how cheap it is and how readily available it is, it's, we're starting to see increases on that side. And then we also reviewed the Narcan overdose report for 2020. Annual uses of Narcon, Narcan increased by over 50% from 2019 to 2020. So it's something that should be monitored going forward. Over the last five years, we've seen gradual increases. However, like I said, from 19 to 20, we saw a significant increase in the amount of usage there. And then finally, we reviewed the year-to-date PA $2 utilization by region and certainly by county. And we'll continue to closely monitor Calhoun County to ensure that our expenditures do not exceed our revenues. So those are my reports for this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we move on, we do have some new Open Meetings Act rules that we have to ensure that we're following. And I just had those presented to me. Again, I had forgotten about them. Have to confirm that each one of the commissioners is physically located tonight in Calhoun County. And if you, you need to be on video according to the Open Meetings Act unless physically unable. So just, Madam Clerk, can you just go down, take a roll to make sure that everybody is within Calhoun County, which I am? And I'm on video. So if you can turn your video on.
Commissioner Tompkins.
Yes, located in Homer Township, Calhoun County.
Commissioner Betty.
Yes, I'm in my kitchen in Calhoun County.
Commissioner Hatcher.
No, I'm in my pajamas and at 139 Ann Avenue, Calhoun County, but you guys need me to be on video?
That's what the Open Meetings Act is.
Well, thanks for letting me know. Do I have time to get my pajamas, my robe off?
You, you do what you need to do to make yourself presentable.
Well, thank you so much. I just give me five minutes and I might be presentable.
Okay. I doubt it takes that long.
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
Right here in Battle Creek.
Commissioner Frisbee.
Yes, in the city of Battle Creek tonight.
Commissioner King.
Yep, I'm here. I want you to tell the people that came up with this good idea to just let us meet face to face.
Commissioner Miller.
I guess I got unmute first. Right here in Marigot Township.
So all seven are for fine.
I agree with, I agree with Commissioner King. I was at the dentist's office today.
Yeah.
But that's okay. That's okay. If you guys want to embarrass me and you want to see what I look like after I leave the dentist.
And I'll have Jim and Kelly put out some of the guidance of it.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. I thought that I'd be able to, no, that's okay, you guys. That's okay. Just, just, just go ahead on and embarrass me. Okay, I look like that, 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 that's, I'm okay. I'm okay.
Anybody else have any special committee workshop or board reports?
Um, Chair Frisbee, I do.
Go ahead, Commissioner Betty.
And I wanted to thank Commissioner Tompkins. He always does such a great job with the SWIMBA report and I attend that meeting along with him. So he does a great job and I really do appreciate that. I just attended my first BCLDFA meeting, which means Battle Creek Local Development Finance Authority. And can you still hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Hey, fine, girl.
Sorry. And myself and Carla Reynolds, who was a former county commissioner, were the new, are, the new people put on there. I was in attendance and sworn in, Carla. I don't, she didn't make it that two hour Zoom meeting. But anyways, so it, I wanted to give you a little bit of information on it. The purpose is to conduct the activities authorized under Act 281, Public Acts of 1986, which is a very good year. That's first year I had a baby. And I think that might be the first year Jake was born or well, not first. It is amended from time to time and to otherwise govern the affairs of the I-94 Business Park and Certified Technology Parks Smart Zone, established by the city of Battle Creek, Michigan, which is in my district pursuant to an agreement of the Battle Creek Aviation and eLearning Smart Zone Agreement with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. The Local Development Financing Authority Budget and Board are subject to approval by the Battle Creek City Commission and the LDFA is managed by Battle Creek Unlimited. So just wanted to give you a little bit of information on that. And we approved the audit that was presented from June of 2020, the annual report from 2020 and the budget, the tentative budget for 2122. Thank you very much.
That's an important assignment because we have to make sure that the counties represented in our, our interests are taken care of in that, in that process. So thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, just have one report from 911. We nominated and approved Jim Blocker to take over his chair. Effective immediately, Jeff had stepped away from Marshall Township. So he decided to step down and he'd done it for many years. So we'll have Jim Blocker moving ahead. All right. I don't think we have any unfinished or old business. We have new business tonight and I'll turn it over Administrator Controller Kelly Scott.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll start by just apologizing and clarifying. The Open Meetings Act was amended during lame duck session right at the end of December. It has provisions that apply from now through the end of March and then it will change again. So we're definitely planning to cover how all of that works during our board orientation, which we're trying to finalize a date hopefully in the middle of February. With the requirement about location, it does not require commissioners to be physically located in Calhoun County. It just requires disclosure of your location, just so that the public is aware. Really just a best practice around video so that the public that is, is viewing our commissioners deliberating can actually see your body language, your, your facial expressions as part of, you know, them, them viewing. So we'll talk more about that during orientation. And then, like I said, right now, the, those amendments have changes in operations that will start at the beginning of April. The county's operations are really continuing as we have been since the middle of July. The courts are reporting right now that they're scheduling or they're sending out summons, notices for jury trials that could potentially begin the beginning of March. So we have to continue to watch the number of new cases and the number of testing positive for COVID on a seven day trend. But that's their hope right now. They're looking at the beginning of March. Our employee count from HR to, as of today, says we've had 55 positive COVID employees and a much larger number, 181, that have had to be off for some reason that relates to COVID exposure, quarantine symptoms, any of that, under our emergency leave policy that we put in place way back almost a year ago. We did expand, extend most of the provisions of that policy and actually expanded to encourage our employees to get vaccinated with no loss in their PTO bank. So that is happening. And then I do have some committee and board reports that I will mention in addition to what you've already heard. The Calhoun Public Safety Information Alliance Board, otherwise known as our RMS Board, which oversees the joint purchase of our law enforcement software that's shared with Calhoun County, Emmett Township, City of Marshall, KCC. That board met earlier this month and we reelected Battle Creek Police Chief Jim Blocker as the Chair and Chief Deputy Sheriff Randy Hazel as the Vice Chair. We also welcomed our new Sheriff Steve Hinkley onto that board. The sheriff has a standing seat on, on that board per the interlocal agreement. The let's see, Veterans Affairs Committee met on January 13. They went over the budget and approved some applications for emergency relief. The county's BC Cal Cal organization that oversees our foreign trade zone has really been ramping up our efforts to put out education around the benefits of the foreign trade zone, which basically reduce costs and tariffs for any of our businesses that import from overseas. So we specifically have some features from local businesses, including Pfizer and Denso. There's a link to the video in, in my update report that will come out later tonight. And then finally, there has been some really exciting movement from the city of Marshall's new Neighborhood Improvement Authorities, or NIAs. They have two of them. One is the South NIA that applies to development on the former Allwind Downs Golf Course property One is the South NIA that applies to development on the former Allwind Downs Golf Course property that has been sold, and there's residential development underway that's expected to produce housing that could be occupied as early as this spring. And then the Northeast Neighborhood Improvement Authority, which was the first one, relates to the State Farm property in the City of Marshall that we're working with the land bank to come up with some residential development there. So again, the county's contribution toward that, those economic development projects is that the Board of Commissioners approved for both of those NIAs, the tax-sharing agreements that allow them to capture future incremental taxes from what the county otherwise would have accrued in order to fund just the public infrastructure portions like sidewalks, utilities, anything that the city will own that can then lower the cost for the private development. And I just want to, I guess, give a final reminder to commissioners that we're working on for the February 4 Board of Commissioners meeting, the bi-annual beginning-of-the-term list of boards and committee assignments for the commissioners. I think there are close to 50 of those. So we sent out files earlier, actually Friday, and asked that you give us back that feedback on your requests by next Monday. And then I'll be working with Chair Frisbee on that recommendation. It will go on the consent agenda as normal for that meeting. So I guess those are the two main things, trying to finalize our board orientation and then get the boards and committees assigned. And I'm hopeful, working with Jim Dyer, that we can structure some of those so that they're retroactive back to January 1st, because as you've heard, some of these committees have already met in January. And just due to the timing of our organizational meeting and getting these in place, it would be nice to retroactively apply them back to January 1st. So that concludes my report. Under new business tonight, we have, let's see, six items. The first five of them come from the road department, and they're all related to construction projects. And so John Midgley is here, our managing director, as well as Christine Parsons, our engineering director. And I will, Christine has provided some good cover information that hopefully you read within the packet. And so I'll introduce the items, and then John or Christine would be happy to answer any questions. These are all, the first four, 12B1, 2, 3, 4 are all our standard MDOT contracts. They're all items that have been included in the road department's budget. They have been planned for a few years because the construction projects come through a planning process that either comes from our rural task force or from BCATs if they're in the urban areas. So these are very much expected and budgeted items. These are just, the MDOT requires the board to approve the formal contracts, and of course, we'll be noting the county's local share obligation. So item 12B1, the first one is contract number 20-5452. This one is on Capitol Avenue Southwest, which is in Emmett Township, from just north of B Drive South to the Battle Creek city limits. So this is a Colden Place Recycling that will reconstruct that roadway. Total is about 334,000. Federal portion of that will cover 221,000, and the road department has budgeted for the local match of 113,000.
I gotta hear Steve, but...
Sorry, I unmute. I want to make sure that we're on the right number. I have on the agenda 5462.
Yes, sorry, the number incorrect. It's 20-5462.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the MDOT contract number 205462, Capitol Avenue Southwest, as presented?
So moved, Betty?
Support, Hatcher.
Okay, that's coming for BCAT's funding, I do believe. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
You have seven, yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B2 is MDOT contract number 20-5481. This one is in Bedford Township, Morgan Road, M37 to North Avenue. This is hot mixed asphalt paving, close to a million-dollar project. When this one includes some state economic development funding as well as federal aid. The federal aid portion is about half, 450,000. State economic development, 344,000, which leaves the county's local match just under 200,000.
Can I have a motion to approve the MDOT contract number 20-5481, Morgan Road, as presented?
So moved, Hatcher.
Support, Smith.
Hatcher and Smith, any discussion?
If I could just note, I'm sorry, if I could just note really quickly that MDOT is planning to improve M37, which is the start point of this project, I believe, next year, so 2022. So our portion of this project, it says it's going from 37 to North Ave. It's not going to start exactly at the bottom of the hill there on M37, because that's not our right-of-way. So, and there's, they have traffic loops for that light there. So the start point of our project will be slightly up the hill. So I know we're going to get some questions about why didn't you go all the way to the bottom of it? And that's because, one, they've got traffic signal loops in the pavement there that we can't touch, and, two, it's not in our right-of-way. So just so everybody knows, it's going to go close to there, and we are addressing the worst areas of it on that hill, but we're not going to be able to touch the part that's outside of our right-of-way. So anything down there, hopefully, MDOT will be improving when they improve their section of M37 in the next year.
Thank you, Christine.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, Christine. I was just going to ask the question, will we, Christine, I'm sorry, and Chair, I'm sorry. I was just going to ask the question, will we ever be able to finalize that point that's out of that? You know, that is out of our, you know, reach right now. We will finalize it, though, correct?
I believe that MDOT is planning to do it in 2022, but they have, yes, they are planning to improve it, I believe, in 2022. I'm not sure if it's 22 or 23. I think it's 22, but it's our intention to, to do, it's a three-inch mill infill, so we're going to mill off the existing pavement and put three inches of high-stress asphalt back down. So what that's going to do is help us address the high levels of truck traffic through there. On this first phase, this is what we're calling Phase 1, and then in 2023, we're going to be doing the other half of Morgan Road. That's what we're considering, Phase 2, from North Ave to M66. And the reason that it's not concurrent from year to year is that we were able to give this economic development grant, which is an additional, I believe, $350,000, $375,000. And what we want to do is be able to get that grant again for the other half, so we have enough money to do the whole thing, because we need that money, but you can't get them back to back. They take enough points off, but it's impossible. So our goal is get the whole thing done by 2023.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? What I would add is, this is due to the work at BCAT's of Christine and Commissioner King and others, making sure that these issues were addressed. That's a high-stress travel area, and it affects both the city and the county, so good work in getting that done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yeah.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B3 is MDOT contract 20-5484. This one is in Albion and Sheridan Townships, Division Drive from Clark Street to the east line. I definitely want to echo what Chair Frisbee said. We have about, it's like, $3 million worth of road improvements on the agenda tonight that would not be possible without the efforts of securing state and federal funding. And those don't just come automatically. They take planning, future planning, long-term planning, and a lot of oversight from the road department and their engineering staff. So I really appreciate that, and I hope the commissioners acknowledge that. So this one is fiber-reinforced HMA paving. This one comes from the federal small urban funding. It's close to half a million dollars. The federal aid is 375. Road Department is 100,000 match.
Can I have a motion to approve the MDOT contract number 20-5484, Division Drive, as presented?
So moved, Hatcher. Support, Hatcher.
Tompkins and Hatcher. Any discussion?
Chair King. I was going to say, goodness sakes, we are having a tough night tonight. I was going to say Chair King.
Go ahead.
Thanks, Eric. Chair Frisbee, for crying out loud. Kelly, I appreciate all of the input that you just gave us, and especially saying that how much our road department and our engineers have done for this, and that that is a great thing for us to acknowledge, and I do appreciate the work that's put in very much to both John and Christine and all the others. So thank you very much.
I would, I would say, I'm sorry, for this project, this, as Kelly mentioned, this is small urban funding. So, excuse me. Excuse me. This has a limited area.
Much better.
This has a limited area of where we can use it. So it's small urban funding. We get in both Marshall and Albion every fourth year, so it alternates. The funding comes every other year, but on the alternate years, the cities get it. So City of Albion will get it on the odd year that we don't, so every second year, and then same for City of Marshall. So every four years, we get this funding, and we plan it out through the Rural Task Force about where it's to be spent. And in Albion, the Albion urban area, there's a very limited number of roads that are considered Albion urban area that we can put this money on to. So it's not like we can put it anywhere in Albion Township or anywhere in Sheridan Township, because it's only the, like, five or six roads right around the city of Albion. But we're lucky enough to get this money, so we have planned out, you know, where we want to spend it every four years. And we don't want to give it up. So if some people are, you know, curious about why it was Division Drive and not someplace else in Albion or Sheridan that was a higher need facility, we would love to put it on those roads, but this funding doesn't allow you to do that, and you still have to provide, like with all of these federal aid projects, local match is required. But we provide the local match, and then we can put the funding on, in this particular case, the very few designated roads that we're able to. So Albion, thankfully, in the urban area, is in really good shape for us. Now, Albion Township, Sheridan Township need a little more work, but that's why it's Division Drive and not someplace else that would be in higher need of construction.
And I appreciate that, Christine. Thank you. And can I ask another question around that?
Sure.
So then, around that, so say, every four years, planning, so that also... So that means you've got to plan, like, that far ahead.
So Yes.
There could be things that maybe are, like, needed more work, but they just are, like, there there wasn't enough planning time, maybe, do I want to say?
Well, like, for instance, this was not the project we had initially planned for this year. We had initially intended to, we had actually started the process. We were planning to replace the set of six culverts under 29 and 1/2 mile road on the Kalamazoo River with a bridge, because we would have this funding, and we applied for a Fisheries Habitat Grant from the DNR. And that, those two sources of funding, plus our local match, would have given us the million or so dollars that we needed to put a bridge there, because those culverts have been there since World War II. So they're, you know, and they're in decent shape for as old as they are, but they're still in the Kalamazoo River. They're old, you know, they do need to be replaced with a bridge eventually. But the Fisheries Habitat Grant said they didn't want to spend all of their money in one place. They wanted to give it to a bunch of little projects, but they said it's a great project, because they had actually asked us to apply. And could we reapply in four years? And we said, or next year, we said, we can't do it next year, because we don't have the matching funds, but we can do it in four years. So that's still a consideration for us. But we have to, when we meet with the Rural Task Force periodically, they ask us to set priorities. And based on feedback that we get from the public, from you, the county commissioners, and other factors within the road department, we set our priorities. This is our top priority for this area, our second and our third typically. And then within that, that's generally how we are able to choose what project we want to do. This was kind of a pivot for us, because we knew that we wanted to be able to spend the money and not lose the money, but we weren't able to replace those culverts this year. So we're hoping to do that in the next round of smaller bin and Albion.
Thank you. That's helpful. Thanks, honey.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatcher?
Yes, please.
You have seven, yes.
Motion carries.
Item 12B4 is MDOT contract 20-5463. This one is in Marengo Township, Partello Road, from 20 Mile to 21 Mile. So the plan is hot mixed asphalt resurfacing, which will include a crush and shape. Total is about 860,000, with 80% coming from federal funds, close to 700,000. The remainder, 170,000, 20% will come from local match budgeted within the road department.
I have a motion to approve the MDOT contract number 20-5463, Partello Road, as presented, Phase 2, as presented.
So moved, Hatcher.
Support, Hatcher.
Betty and, Betty and Miller?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay. Motion support, is there any discussion?
I got something.
Yes, sir.
So last year, we started Phase 1. Is there a reason why we stopped before we got to 20 mile road? Could we stop probably 150 yards before that?
We just didn't have enough money to go all the way down there.
But we're going to start right from where we left off, or we're going to start at 20 this time?
Yes, we're starting right where we left off. It was, it's slightly to the southwest of 20 Mile, and it's going slightly to the northeast of 21. It's not stopping exactly at those two spots.
Is there future plans on continuing on past this in the future?
We have considered options for that. We'd like to take it. Right now, I think we're stopping just to the east of Marley School. And we've looked at taking it further, but we have to address Pustula Sinkhole first, and that's a fairly expensive proposition. So it's not in the current TIP for the RTF, but it is something we have looked at and priced out. We've done, not this summer, but the summer previous, we went out there and had soil borings done to see exactly how we would address that, because we can't... We could rebuild the road out there without addressing that, but it would be a huge waste of money, obviously, because you know what it looks like right there. So it's our intention to address that before we are able to pave over the road, because otherwise, you're going to continue to have the same settlement issues that you have now, so.
All right, I got it.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Hopefully, in the next, we are getting ready in 2020. I think TIP development for the next round of both TIPs, for both BCATs and the RTF, will be the end of this year, if I'm not mistaken. They'll start the development of the draft, the next set of draft TIPs. So that's when we start thinking about the projects, well, not thinking about, that's when we would start putting on paper the projects that we want to have in the next round of TIP. And we keep a running list for the last couple of years. We've been discussing, what are the next things we want to do? So I would love any feedback that you guys have on what projects you're interested in seeing that we are able to do as federal aid projects, because, one, that would be very helpful for us. Two, it's not just every primary road in the county. There are certain roads that aren't eligible for federal aid funding. Excuse me, and, okay. So there are certain roads that are not eligible for federal aid funding and certain roads that are. So we would love to be able to get your feedback on what you'd like to do. Our interest is in doing systemic projects, so long-term corridor projects, so like Phase 1, Phase 2... Our interest is in doing systemic projects, so long-term corridor projects, so like Phase One, Phase Two, where you can do multiple miles of a road, not just random segments of good road around the county. We want to make long stretches of good road. So that's why you're seeing things like Partello Phase One, Partello Phase Two, Morgan Road Phase One and Phase Two, Union City Road, Faces One, Two, and Three. And then we're looking at doing the next section of twenty-eight mile. So any feedback you guys have would be great.
Kristen, I would just be, I would, feedback wise, I would just be interested in in just knowing and knowing ahead of time if this would possibly cause, I guess I just want to say hardship or expense to the township where the work was being done. Does that?
In the sense of like businesses being affected?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. Yes, I can definitely keep you apprised of that. For the most part, we are able to have either projects move fairly quickly. If we do like a crushing shape where we completely pulverize the road, we set a limit where they have to have it paved within like ten calendar days.
Right.
Which is reasonable, so that you can, once the HMA surface is back on there, it may not necessarily be open, but you can still get in and out. And even if it's gravel, you can get in and out. But we try to, usually the contract, yeah, we tried to keep it where it's not closed for super long periods of time as a general rule. There's things like bridge replacements, obviously, that would take a little bit longer, but for the most part, the road projects themselves generally don't leave the road closed for, you know, an extremely long amount of time, three weeks, four weeks sometimes. But, you know, we will, if I envision there being any kind of hardship, I can definitely let you know.
Sure, that would be perfect. That, that, that's my number one concern is just making sure that it doesn't cause a conflict for them. Okay? Perfect. Thank you. Thank you.
It's easy to talk the lingo and some of us get it for everybody's benefit. Can you tell everybody what tip is?
Oh, I'm sorry. Gosh. So the Transport TIP is the Transportation Improvement Program. So what that is, we have one for the BCATs, the municipal planning organization, and we also have it for the Rural Task Force where we negotiate with other parties. So for BCATs, we have to negotiate with the city of Battle Creek. They say we want this much and we say we want this much. And generally it gets split fifty-fifty. So for the, you know, we program each year, maybe they'll get a little more one year and we'll get a little more the next year, but we try to generally, it generally worked out to be fifty-fifty. With the RTF, the Rural Task Force TIP, we get a fixed amount of money that we don't have to negotiate for. Because there's six other counties in our rural task force. So it's Berry, Branch, St. Joe, Cass, Kalamazoo, I believe. I think that's it. And so we each get a set amount of money and then we allocate where we want to spend that each year in the Transportation Improvement Program and say with this amount of money, this is the project we want to do.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchery?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
You have seven yes.
Motion carries.
Item twelve B five is a little different. This is a request for approval of the Raymond Road Bridge Design Contract Award in Emmett Township. And this relates back to the actual construction project to, to replace this bridge over the MDOT Railroad was approved by the board back in twenty nineteen. It's about a one point one million dollar construction project that will be funded next year with funding that comes through BCATs. And according to our purchasing policy, the road department is able to solicit competitive bids for the professional design services that go with projects like this. So they did that competitive bid for design engineering services and are recommending Whitman, which was the low bidder at approximately thirty-two thousand dollars. And so this exceeds the current threshold above which we would bring such contracts to you for approval.
Can I have a motion to approve the Raymond Road Bridge Design Award as presented?
So moved. King.
Support Betty?
King and Betty. Any discussion?
I would just want to say that this is actually a, we're not going to be replacing the whole bridge, but we are going to be doing substructure rehabilitation, so repairs to the piles underneath are in really bad shape. So we're going to be doing substructure patching. We'll be doing some work on the deck as well, pretty minor stuff. If anything was going to be impacting a business, I might say this would, although most of the work is going to be taking place underneath. But I would imagine that they're probably having to work, they mostly probably have to work from the deck over, like to work underneath. So I'm not sure if it'll be closed or not yet, that since it has yet to be designed, we're not really sure about the order of operations, but this may impact operations at Kellogg right there. Not for a huge amount of time, but it definitely could have some kind of impact.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Are we got, do we have any other bridges that we're working on this year? Is, I think, was it Old Twenty-Seven, the Cats Township on the list for twenty-one?
We applied for money for those. We did not get any bridge funding for in the last round. We applied in twenty twenty for bridge funding. We apply every year for the maximum amount that we can. We didn't get any bridge funding in twenty twenty. They, they give it to us three years out. So this is technically going to be built in twenty twenty-two, the improvements. That's why the design is taking place this far in advance because it has to go through MDOT's submittal process. We did get preventative maintenance money for four other bridges, but that's pretty minor work. So deck repairs, some minor hand patching, guard rail replacement. We, our top priority bridges right now are the three bridges on Old Twenty-Seven, so the one south of Tecantia, which is probably our highest priority. And the two up in Lee Township around T Drive North and V Drive North. And then the tribe is interested in looking at S Drive South Bridge. But right now we have no funding for that. They said that in the southwest region, which is the region that we're in for bridge funding, there was forty-six million dollars in applications for bridge funding, just in our region, and four point two million in funding. So the city of Albion got some money, St. Joseph County got some money. The city of Battle Creek got a little bit of preventative maintenance, but ours did not get any, even though they scored really high. So it was really unfortunate that you know, the need is there, it's just the funding is not available.
So Christine, and I'm just going to ask a question. So did that mean that you needed funding for something that you need to have done, but we just did not receive the funding?
Yes, we applied for bridge grant money and didn't get it. And, and I wouldn't say we get it every year, but we usually, they try to rotate who they give it to, but it's not just like one county gets it one year, one county gets it the other year. They have a numerical scoring system that they use. And ours were second from the highest on replacements, but the one in St. Joseph County scored a couple of points higher. And so they got that money, the money that allocated for bridge replacement funding. So it's just there's a lot of bridge, there's a lot of infrastructure needs across Michigan, particularly in our region, and just not enough money, unfortunately.
Is there anything as a board or as a, you know, collectively as a board that we can do to assist you in getting that additional funding?
Always you guys provide letters of support, which is really helpful. But what we, what helps us too is also letters of support from local businesses. And so in our last round of bridge funding, well, in twenty nineteen, because twenty twenty, when we were applying, everything was shut down for COVID, we contacted a lot of local businesses and were able to get for the one in Tecantia, we probably got fifteen letters of support, which is really helpful and helps you score a lot higher. But it's just that I, I, you know, I don't know. I don't know if contacting legislators would help. If there's because most of it's based on like the needs of the bridge itself, you know, like how many cars does it carry? And since Old Twenty-Seven particularly, that's an emergency route for I sixty-nine. So it already, it scores really high. It's just that it doesn't, it doesn't score as high as the covered bridge in St. Joseph County, apparently. So.
Derek, I'm sorry. What were you, what, please, I mean, like enlighten me, what were you going to say?
I said that play the Powerball or the Mega and we'd be able to fix bridges.
I heard somebody won that in Maryland last night.
If I take the Powerball, the Mega Ball, okay, I'm out. I'm just letting y'all guys know. You know, you can come to the party. I'm gonna invite you to the party. You guys are all invited to the party, but I'm out.
Dane, Commissioner Smith is trying to get back in. He got.
I'm sorry. I, I, I'm so sorry, Chair. I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
I got excited about winning the Powerball.
I wish, I wish we all would.
Yeah. I may win.
All right. Any other discussion about the Raymond Road Bridge? I just want one clarification. This is the one north of Michigan Avenue, correct?
Yes, 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 it is. Right there next to Kellogg.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchery?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
You have seven yes.
Motion carries.
Item on our new business tonight is twelve B six. This is an annual grant request from the Sheriff's Office, the twenty twenty-one Medical Marijuana Operations and Oversight Grant. The grant will provide thirty-four thousand dollars to help supplement the cost of one of the sheriff's full-time deputies. The grant is limited. In recent years, it's been changed to be limited to education, communication, and outreach. The dollar amount is based on the number of medical marijuana card carrying citizens that we have in Calhoun County. So we're getting the maximum that we're allowed to, and the sheriff is hoping to be able to use the funding given budget constraints this year and the number of vacancies and depending on how school operations progress. It was a debate for sure. He definitely thought about not requesting the funds and ultimately decided to request the funds. Hope to use them if not, you know, we would return them to the state and try to limit the amount that the County General Fund is required to supplement the grant funds.
I have a motion to approve the two thousand twenty-one Medical Marijuana Operation and Oversight Grant as presented.
Support Hatchery.
I missed, I got support by Hatchery and I missed the.
Motion by Tompkins.
Tompkins and Hatchery. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchery?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
You have seven yes.
Motion carries. Next item is citizens' time. The same rules apply as during the first citizens' time. Please limit your time to three minutes and no negative personal comments. Please mute your TV or computer when calling in as the background sound will generate feedback. Please note there's an approximately thirty-second delay between the live meeting and the YouTube feed. Is there anyone that would like? Dana, I don't see anybody in the queue. Do you?
No, I don't either. None so far.
Okay, wait just a minute. Is there anybody you'd like to address their commissioners?
Still no one in the queue yet.
All right. Along. Is there anybody who would like to address their commissioners?
Mr. Chair, real quick.
Yes.
Thank you. I just wanted to take the opportunity certainly to wish Commissioner Smith a very happy birthday and hope he had a great day today. So just real brief today. So Jake, hope you had a great day.
Happy birthday, Jake.
We hope all those kids didn't eat your cake. All right, commissioners' time. Commissioners like to address.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Vice Chair, I just wanted to make mention that I know we won't meet again, but I believe January twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh, I believe it's the twenty-seventh is national. I'm sorry, excuse me. It is, I lost my train of thought just as I was doing the dates. I do apologize, you guys. But it is, oh my goodness. You know what, King, just come back to me. I lost my train of thought just that fast. It's called Ozhimer. And then don't forget, I was at the dentist earlier today. So I'm so sorry, you guys, but I'm going to come right back to it.
Anybody else? I just have two things. I want to remind you that invite went out for February nineteenth, Board Orientation at eight AM. It's an important day for all of us. I learned something new just about every one of them that I've been in. So we all be there participate. And it is online, so I wish we could do it in person. It's much, much nicer. And then what we've done tonight in approving those MDOT contracts, it's almost six hundred thousand dollars in county match money. And I think back to the days where we couldn't do any federal aid projects because we didn't have the match prior to two thousand and twelve, thirteen. Come and, and really happy with the amount of work we're getting done and the high-impact areas that we're doing it. And I hope we can continue that throughout the county, even in the smaller rural areas. Fisher Hatchery, did you?
Yes, Commissioner. And, and I want to apologize so much. I, I first of all, want to say that to everyone that please remember that I was at the dentist yesterday and today. So if anyone knows how that feels, okay, I was just at the dentist. So I had no cocaine shots and, but I wanted to say that it is National Holocaust Day. And please understand that my, my forgetting that was not because I in any way don't understand the importance of that. It was merely because, again, I've been at the dentist and I've been taking medication for that for two weeks. But it is International Holocaust Remembrance Day, January twenty-seventh. And I just wanted to make recognition of that and to understand the importance of that in our county and in our community and that there are several sites that if anyone wants to check into what that is and how they, how the remembrance and the honoring of that is, they can go on to sites as the, the number one site is historyholocaust.com. And just appreciate and understand the importance of that in our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? All right, we'll move on to claims payable. Can I have a motion to approve the Calhoun County Claims Payable for December thirtieth, two thousand twenty through January fifteenth?
Support Hatchery.
The amount of two million nine hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one dollars and seventy-one cents as presented. Hatchery, and?
Yes.
Need a support.
Support Tompkins.
Hatchery and Tompkins. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please take the roll.
Commissioner Tompkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Betty?
Yes.
Commissioner Hatchery?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Frisbee?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Miller?
Yes.
You have seven yes.
Motion carries. Are there any announcements?
Yes, Mr. Chair, if I may, please.
Please do, Mr. Vice Chair.
All right. I know I've been somewhat absent in this. Obviously, COVID has created a lot of issues with the amount of events that have went on, but we do in fact have a couple of announcements to make in, in the area. This tomorrow, tomorrow evening, the Fourth Annual Dart Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Community Celebration will be taking will be taking place virtually at six thirty PM. Uh, tune into Facebook and type in Harrington Helpers if you'd like to take a look. Uh, there will be guest performers, speakers with the keynote addressed by Jean-Taz Wallace, Director of Bands and Choirs at Hannover Horton Schools. He is a local uh Albion person as well as an Albion College graduate, so it should be a great evening tomorrow night. And then also the Second Annual Mental Health Symposium will be held virtually on Monday, January twenty-fifth and Tuesday, January twenty-sixth, starting each day at six PM. There will be guest presentation, expert panelists from government, public safety and educational leaders, and breakout rooms with speakers for in-depth learning. Pre-registration is required. Uh, this is put on by the Macedonia Missionary Baptist Church in Albion and go to their Facebook page and find the link to register. I certainly had the honor of participating last year in it and will be doing so again this year. It's really a great event and it's bringing a lot of information, uh, especially as we're dealing with mental health as relates to COVID and the amount of folks that have been sheltered in place and dealing with all the things that they're dealing with at this point in time. So, again, it's, uh, there's a quite a lineup, quite a stellar lineup of folks and uh if you get the opportunity, please take advantage. All right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other announcements? All right, everyone be safe. We'll see you in two weeks.